With the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, their God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're going to start with pre-bargaining public hearing. I will turn it over to Dr. Hyatt.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Board and our one member of the audience today. Thanks for being here. Board, just as a reminder, every, every time that we intend to enter into bargaining with our teachers forum, we are required to hold a pre-bargaining public hearing. And so I'm just going to read a little bit about what this is and why we, why we do this. So in 2019, the Indiana General Assembly enacted legislation that was codified as Indiana Code 2029-61B, requiring that a school employer and school employees hold a public hearing and take public testimony to discuss the items described in the Indiana Teacher Collective Bargaining Law before engaging in formal collective bargaining. Therefore, Noblesville Schools and the Noblesville Teachers Forum will hereby convene a public hearing in accordance with Indiana Code. As a superintendent of Noblesville Schools, I will be representing the school corporation and Tracy Milliken seated here beside me will represent the teachers forum for this joint hearing. So at this time, we're going to open up the floor for any public comment, again, having to do with the upcoming collective bargaining session. Seeing none, we will, I guess I would ask this board, since you're here with us today, do you have any questions or any input you want to share with, with myself or with Ms. Milliken before we end this hearing?
No.
I think your updates have been sufficient to this point until you get into it.
Very good. Thank you. So just as a reminder, Board, bargaining officially opens on September 15th. We have, we will not start a talk till we're first on most of the dates that we decided that we would actually start our, our process, but we've obviously been hard at work, just an informal conversation and looking at some things as we get ready. So thanks as always for your support. And with that, we will close the pre-bargaining public hearing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will move on to updates. We're going to start with academic updates.
Thanks for having us, Dr. Townsend and I are here today to share an update on some progress. We do this, I think, annually, by this time of year, every year. September seems to be the time because that's by then the time we've received all of the data from IDOE. Our teams have had a chance to dig into that data and prepare it for purposes of sharing with you, but also giving us time to dig into that data for purposes of school improvement, which is a continuous process that we engage in over time across all of our schools. I would like to start with just a reminder of the Board goal on academic excellence, commitment to equipping all students for the dynamic challenges of the future. And while that's multifaceted and there's a lot of different things that we could dig into for purposes of school improvement today, we'll, we'll primarily be focusing on our standardized assessment data for this past school year. So that'll be the focus for today. You should have a packet of information in front of you and that data will also be shared here in the presentation. And I can share the presentation after the, the meeting is over later on today. Okay. So ready to dive in. So a couple of things I wanted to just make sure to educate on the Board first today is we've had some legislative updates that really do affect the focus of school improvement. The process, the structure that's been in place for many, many years here in Indiana has changed for the first time in many years, starting this school year. So first, I wanted to draw your attention to HEA 1002. We sometimes refer to this as the, the big deregulation bill. There were several steps that were taken to remove certain regulations for school corporations. And one of them specifically had to do with school improvement. So for many, many years, the state of Indiana has required school districts complete review and update annually, a three-year plan for continuous school improvement, and it includes very, very prescribed information that was to be included and then we would have to submit those reports to the state. So as a part of this new legislation, it eliminated the requirement to create these plans and submit them to the IDOE. And so you first hear that and you think, well, then does that mean school improvement goes away? Well, no, school improvement is at the heart of what we do. It's an important part of what our leadership focuses in on every day, both at the district level and also at the school level. And so one of the things that we've had to do, like all other districts across the state, is determine what is going to be that new structure and that new process that we're going to build locally, because that's the spirit, the intent behind this deregulation was to allow districts to have more autonomy over how they structure school improvement moving forward. So Dr. Townsend and I are going to talk to you a little bit more about that here in just a moment. So that's one important piece is that those old rigid school improvement plans that were prescribed by the state are no more. We are building our now, our local process. The other legislative update that really affects the focus of school improvement is the new accountability system. So HEA 1498 requires that the IDOE and the State Board of Education develop a new school accountability system, which would replace the previous framework with a new A through F grading system. And so I put here overview because there is a link to an overview document that is provided by the IDOE. And essentially what this is saying is that the new accountability model for Indiana is going to be grounded in those characteristics that are on the graduates prepared to succeed dashboard. It's been around for a few years now. And so that would be academic mastery, career and post-secondary readiness, both in terms of credentials and experiences that students have, communication and collaboration, work ethic, and then civic, financial and digital literacy. And so currently you can go onto the Indiana graduates prepared to succeed dashboard. And by school or district, you can see that they have certain measures or metrics that they have established for these different characteristics. And so the new accountability system will be based upon those same metrics. The new accountability system right now is in draft form. And so up until just a few days ago, the state was still allowing for educators across the state to provide feedback on the draft model, make suggested edits and changes. And so that's happening right now. So we will not know until December what this final accountability plan actually looks like. But we feel like we have a pretty good idea based upon the drafts that have been presented to us so far. So we've already started looking at, okay, how are our schools now through this new system going to be held accountable? What are the metrics or measures of accountability? And how also will that inform what we do locally in terms of promoting continuous school improvement? In terms of the goals that we establish at each school, the types of data that we gather and we analyze, we want to make sure that we're aligning our practices to what it is we're going to be held accountable to. So.
When does this start?
So this will be finalized in December and it will start at the end of this current school year.
Oh, so the end of the, this school year?
This school year.
Okay.
Next year.
In a lot of ways, the, the process that has unfolded has really kind of mimicked what happened with the new graduation requirements, the new diploma requirements where we knew that we were going to have to pivot pretty quickly because last December, those diploma requirements were finalized. So we're a little bit in the same boat in terms of timeframe with these accountability requirements. We'll find out in December, but then we'll be held accountable to those requirements starting after the end of the school year. So it'll be a pretty quick turnaround. So that's why we've tried to stay up in front, just review the presentations that are being provided by the state, making sure that we still have a pretty good idea of what it is we're going to be held accountable to. So we can consider that as we move forward with our school improvement expectations for our buildings.
That'll be a grade for the whole district? Or it will be by the same, but then each month, so then they'll average it out to get, okay.
So this really overall isn't anything new for our district because pre-COVID, we essentially had something similar to this, right? How it was compared to what we used to do.
That should also be considered. So things like credits earned, post-secondary readiness in terms of seals, the students' requirements, attendance, participation in school events and activities. So if it'd be very, very different in terms of how they calculate that grade is going to be based on metrics and variables that are very different than what they use, which was solely test scores before.
So everything that they're using, all of the measurements they're using are student-based? Or is it also in combination of staff performance as well?
Student-based measures, yeah.
Where's the data actually collected? Because it'll seem very subjective.
Yeah.
I mean, like work ethic, where's the?
So we presented the presentation today because we could have this whole other hour on this.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
So we started off this summer with really thinking through multiple sources of data and analyzing that. And so teams came together looking at not just academic data, but also looking at attendance data, teacher retention data and other pieces of data that helped them come up with what we call a problem of practice. And so they looked at all of that data, then determined what their problem of practice was going to be, which when you think about the old school improvement plan and you look at the action plan that they used to have at the back of the school improvement plan, there was usually a goal that was there and then steps towards, towards that goal that they had really planned out what was going to happen. This problem of practice, buildings are coming up with one or two problems of practice to really hone in on because we know where we put our focus, we'll see gains. And so being able to think about that problem of practice is something we're wondering about. We're thinking, we look at the data, we say, yes, we need to improve in X, Y, or Z. And then we go about as a team trying to decide what that looks like. So we have some examples. This first one, persistent achievement gaps among specific student subgroups on iLearn and iRead. And that is specifically one that we are really looking at, at the district level and the Department of Learning, knowing that there are subgroups that we're really wanting to focus in on in order to see those gains and focusing in on that tier-one instruction and how do we, how do we help with that? Overall level proficiency rates over time on iLearn and iRead. So we're wanting to see those gains. So focusing there. The need for improved literacy instruction and intervention. And then the need for expanded professional learning structures and opportunities. So our buildings will each have one or two of these where they are really focusing with their leadership teams and having conversations around that in order to grow this year. And that does kind of take that focus that we had the action plan, that's kind of that top of the action plan right there. After that, they start, they go through what's called the full cycle of inquiry. After you've looked at the data, you now are going to plan. So you're thinking through what are the goals? So each administrator will think through what are my goals? And they're looking at both their leadership goals. So what is it they need to do as a leader in order to grow staff and grow students? And then they're also looking at it from the perspective of what are the systems we need to have in place that help us, help us do that. And so they'll have those goals and then they will talk through strategies that will meet those goals and think through what that looks like for them. We start our meetings with administrators here in like the next week or so to go over their problem of practice and their goals and the strategies. So once they've gone through towards the end of the year, it's like April, May-ish, we will sit down and have conversations around how did it go? What did we notice? And there will be also benchmarks along the way. So it's not going to be just the end of the year. We'll meet with administrators monthly in order to have conversations around their problem of practice, around their goals. How are we doing at meeting those goals? What are the strategies that have been put in place? And then also what's the supports that are needed from district level in order to help them achieve those goals?
So before we get into specific data updates, the whole idea is that it is cyclical, that we will go through this process where we implement and then we assess the result of that implementation through data collection, through spring and over the summer, and then the process continues and it, it just goes in that cycle. So it's various, it's actually in that way, it's very similar to the old state prescribed process where there's annual data analysis, you assess to identify what are those problems that your, your data are saying that you're confronting as a school or as a district? What kind of a plan are you going to put in place? You implement that plan and then you reassess. And so it really does keep the heart of that continuous school improvement process is embedded in the new admin GED. Because very nice that we found this that give our admin teams at the building level and then by department here at E S C to work together to do the data analysis and have the conversation, identify the problems of practice. And we can see across the system where there are patterns that exist. And we discuss that for example, in the Department of Learning. When it comes to supporting high-quality professional instruction and assessment, what can we do there? To make sure that we're all supporting the schools and the school teams in terms of their problems and goals that are attached to the process. So. One second pause before we move on to questions.
Yes, it used to be that as a board, we would approve improvement plans. That was part of our role. So obviously we won't be doing that now. Will the board, will you have something that you'll share with the board? I mean, they're, they're going to be different, obviously, by school, just like they were before. But where, where does this, I think we talked about this as a board a few months ago when, when we found out these were going away. Like how, how then will we be communicated with these plans? I mean, the past, they were really thick and.
Yeah. In the past plans, they included a lot of boilerplate information that the state required. Things like describing how you engage parents. It is, it was a whole laundry list of criteria. It was a checklist almost. And those things are no longer required, which what's nice about that is it allows buildings to be more flexible in terms of really analyzing data, honing in on the things that they know are most important, spending their time on that. And so we're in the process, like Dr. Townsend mentioned, of setting up our meetings now. Those are us that evaluate our building principles. So we're collecting, we're going to be collecting over the next month what the problem of practice and the individual goals are and plans. So I could see us being able to maybe then do a broad, a broad show like overview that then we could provide to the board so that you could see across the ten schools, this is, this is how we kind of framed the school improvement process. So I could see us providing something like that to you.
I think that that would be good to make an overview because of the past, I mean, you know, it was a lot to read, but I think if we had a, you know.
I could see this being a really succinct version. It would actually be probably a lot more clear and focused for you all to be able to review what's going on across the full scope of all districts.
And then obviously they make sure, the, the building administrators make sure it's tied back to the strategic plan.
Yes. Yep. Absolutely. Other questions? All right. So we're going to do the data. We're going to start with iLearn. So format, which we're going to be this information is taking from, it is the last couple of years we've got like this information to provide you. So I think that context is probably important. And a lot of them are known and understood where we are in our performance and how we can take it to.
All right. Real quick, before you jump into this, how many school districts are in the state?
About 200, uh, so public schools?
Well, what this is based on? This is how we place among other districts.
The bottom of this public school corporation is about 290 public schools. Are you doing Indiana schools, public charterers, everything? I don't know.
Well, does this include the charters and?
The top one does.
Okay.
That's probably right. Just to share like if people, every single school that educated kids, they have one kid. Some charter schools, other schools, they're in that top. I mean, even the smaller that exists or private, that's everyone. We are able to get that data from the state, provide that to us.
Okay.
And so we run for textualize everyone and then also just public schools.
And so there are, how many did you say? That's just public schools? Okay. Okay.
Public schools, public schools, which is about 290.
Okay.
At this level, I learned the district grades three, three-way. And just both administrative screen. Next year, we will again, the screen, the hours. This is our spring for us. It has asked a couple of things to know. It prioritized 2023 Indiana standards using the testing. The state has held out, uh, the word that means is determining all the standards in which the question were going to be based on the assessment. In that transitional way, um, the only 20 Indiana standards. This test was updated to reflect the newer standards in terms of the testing items. And then on that test, there is always something called a performance test. In this case, it's composition rating for ELA. It was a field test for all students because it was new. So it was not, those results were not incorporated into the overall scale scores that students received. So that's a little in the weeds, but it's just, it was an updated test to reflect updated standards. So I think that was just a nice reminder that we needed to provide you. And then you see our percentile rank. So remember, a reminder on what percentile is, is for example, if you just look all the way over to the far right for ELA and math, among all Indiana schools, it says 93rd. So what that means is that of all schools across the state who had students who participated in this test, Noblesville Schools performed better than 93% of those students. So another way of saying that would be that our students' performance on this assessment was in the top 7% of all school districts across the state. So what you can see there is we've provided the breakdown for both ELA and then math, and then also ELA and math both. And so we did have a very strong performance this past year on iLearn. When we received the preliminary data, I was really encouraged. And then further, just really, really happy to see how we had performed once we were able to calculate out what the percentiles were. So you can see that the way that that trends in terms of how we perform relative to all other districts across the state. And then this is maybe a little small, but this is just another way to compare our performance against the state's performance. So you could see, for example, with English Language Arts on the left, the proficient percentage in Indiana was at 40.6% of all students. And for us, it was 60.2%, so well above the state average. And then also with math, the state's proficient percentage was 42.1%. Again, we were well above the state average at 56.7. One of the things that we added in, just as a reference that we think is important, is that pre-pandemic performance level going back to 2019. There's been a lot of attention and focus on schools recovering from the pandemic in terms of students' performance on these assessments. And so you can see that we've trended pretty steadily upward towards that pre-pandemic performance level. In English Language Arts, math, it's been a little more flat, although you can see over time from 50.1% in 2021, all the way up to 56.7% in 2025. So that just again, kind of shows you where we're at relative to statewide. And then I also wanted to share this with you, just in terms of the percentage point change, again, from 2021 to 2025. And you can see that Noblesville is the gold bar. On the left is English Language Arts, on the right is math. And then the state of Indiana is the bar that is in blue. And so you can see that while the state's percentage point change on ELA has actually dipped below the last, in the last two grade levels, you can see for us it's above. And then also you can see that same trend, we're well above in math also in terms of the percentage point change of students passing by grade level. So the only two areas that we have that kind of stand out to us right now that we want to dig further into are obviously grades four and five with math. That's the only location in which we see a little bit of a dip as compared to the state. But you can see overall though, relatively speaking, our math performance remains strong. So before we move on to iRead, any questions about iLearn data? Yep.
You know, when I look at that, going back to the, the graph, the top line graph, I thought that the one before, you know, when we include all schools, we have a higher percentage. Does that, is this statistically significant that the charter schools are dragging everyone else down?
I don't know if I'm following you.
Okay. So let's go on the, I'm on this line up here. Right. Okay.
Oh, that one. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, no, on this line. We're higher when you include all schools. Because that means that there is significance in that charter schools are dragging the rest of them down and making us higher. You said, so I mean, we're higher when, when all the schools.
Oh, among all schools as opposed to among public school.
Number 93 and it's 92 when it's just public schools.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, I thought that was very interesting. And I mean, there's a lot of detail that's detailed data that's couched under there.
Yeah, you, you think we, the way we push charter schools, that they ought to be like way better than us. But something's not right in this number. But it may be because you said it's not the same overall numbers. It's a numbers game.
Right.
Is it statistically significant? I guess, or that's just a casual observation that.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, wait, they brag about charter schools being so dad gum good compared to public schools. Well, that shouldn't be the.
I think it's in. I think it's, I, I think it's very, we do this for that reason. It's very important to contextualize our performance.
Yes.
Both just comparing us against all public schools.
Yes.
And also comparing our performance against all schools, which include private schools as well. And remember, charter schools are public schools.
Yes.
So, that's something that's a little bit of a misnomer sometimes, because they are also public schools, but they play by different rules.
Yes.
Um, so to speak, and what traditional public.
Now, do we throw the, 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 all schools, the like Garen and Cathedral and, and is, is that top number?
On that top number, that is every type of school that exists in the state, is every single school.
They say back to state, they'll let us keep all the money and, and those guys aren't doing as good as we are. I'm, I'm just being our.
You're drawing a conclusion.
So, what is your, what are your thoughts on, I mean, if I'm looking at this correctly, math seems to be our weak point?
Relatively speaking, yeah, yes.
So, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that or ideas as to why that may be?
Yeah, number one, we implemented, we're still implementing a new curriculum last year, it was still fairly new. Um, I think teachers have gotten more comfortable with it this year. It was very different than the curriculum we had previous to. And we've provided a lot of training and support, um, to our teachers when it comes to using the new math curriculum.
When was that implemented?
So, that would have been implemented, so last year was the, is it the second year? Yeah, last year was the second year for the curriculum. So, uh, and we're continuing to provide support this year. Because remember, not only did the curriculum change, but probably just as important, if not more important, the standards shifted. And so, what we expect in terms of student learning outcomes has changed in math, uh, because the standards changed. And so, that takes some time. And so, um, that's something that obviously we're continuing to support this year.
Sure, now do you anticipate any, um, issues with the ELA program since we just implemented a new program with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think anytime you're bringing systemically something new, it's brand new to everyone. And again, remembering that the standards are shifted, have shifted too, that there is gonna be that, sometimes people call it an implementation dip, where it's unfamiliar and you're learning something new for the first time. And so, it's gonna feel a little clunky at first. And so, we've obviously been, um, uh, keeping close tabs on our English Language Arts implementation, because it is brand, brand new and very, very different, especially at the elementary level. It is very different than what we have had in past years. And so, we know that it's gonna take teachers some time to get comfortable with it, to get familiar with it, because it's, it's a new thing. I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, I just, we have talked, Ryan and I have talked a lot about to the I DID Elementary. Your, we've had a lot of, um, program adoptions for the past three years, where math and science, now ELA. And so, not doing a program review this year is gonna be super helpful in the sense, uh, teachers are gonna be able to get used to teaching, um, their content in multiple ways, and because there is a need to be able to go back and think through math more closely, that you also have to, you, there's only so much one person can, can do, right? And so, we've just really talked about how the system of a yearly program review has actually not surfaced as well at the elementary, um, secondary. You have content-specific subject areas, and that makes it a little, a little different. And so, um, I'm looking forward to our conversations with the team as we move forward, just to be able to think that through, so we can, um, focus a little bit more.
A lot of change very quickly. If you think about new science standards, new math standards, all of the new literacy requirements and all the legislation of the last year or two around literacy, especially at the elementary level, that all lands in one classroom on a singular, I mean, there's one teacher who's.
Right, two teachers at everything, yeah.
And so, it has been a lot, so we are glad to have a little bit of.
Right, I think it would be interesting or beneficial even to see, like, the indicator, the years that we had new curriculum introduced to compare the test scores,
Hmm, hmm.
um, to follow that trend.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you can have such a chart?
We could try. Yeah, we could try.
Okay.
Yeah. Other thoughts, questions? Discussion on I LEARN? Alright, we're gonna move on to I READ.
Yep, so just says some reminders. Um, I READ this year, if a student did not pass and did not have a good cause exemption, um, there was required retention, and we'll look at that here in just a second. Also, there was an additional summer retest opportunity. So, our students had the opportunity, our third grade students this year had the opportunity to take it three times. They took it in the spring, then they took it at the end of the school year, and then also in the summer. And this year, we were going to, um, implement the second grade administration, and then it became required. So, um, we had our second grade students that took I READ three. Those that passed this year, um, their scores will go into, this past year, their scores will go into the third grade scores. So, the third grade students, um, that passed this year, and if we had any second graders, that might have been another school that might have taken it and passed, that's in our third grade count. The second grade does not count towards our pass rate until those second graders are in third grade. Does that make sense?
Hmm, hmm.
So, as you look here, you'll be able to see how we rank among all Indiana schools and also among, um, public school corporations, and similar to what Ryan shared earlier. And what we are noticing is that we are staying just about steady on our I READ scores, and the state did have an increase of, it looks like almost five percent. So, that five percent increase, so this is something that we are definitely investigating. Um, I know Dan's probably gonna talk about that in a, in a little bit, that really wanting to dig in and see, because that ninety-five percent goal is there, and we do believe our kids can pass and that we can make that ninety-five percent or above. And here is just a reminder about the good cause exemptions, and it's really tiny. That's okay, I'm gonna put, I'm putting it up right here.
I don't think I can.
Um, but, yeah, it's, yeah, we've got it, okay, good. And so, this is just a reminder about good cause exemptions. If a student did get a good cause exemption, they can move on to fourth grade. And that, I'm not gonna read through each of those, but those are the details of, um, of the students that would move on to fourth grade with that good cause exemption. This year, we had eighty-seven students with a good cause exemption, and we had three students without a good cause. So, those three students were retained in third grade this year.
Three, three total.
Three total. And then this is a comparison chart from year to year. So, you can see the blue are the students without a good cause exemption, and the yellow are the students with a good cause exemption.
So, and another way of saying that is, and because we immediately pulled the data, um, the, the granular data on student by student. And so, of those eighty-seven that are of the ninety, those are either students that have, um, an IEP, that are qualified for special education services, and/or multilingual learners with an ILP. And so, um, we have already started digging in more specifically to that data. We've already actually called and held a meeting, um, with our school principals, um, and had a really, really good conversation about what we do to address this, this issue, so that, um, we don't have these same results again for next year. Um, there are clear patterns that have emerged out of the data. I think, you know, the good cause exemption data is a pretty powerful indicator of that, that we need to look at what types of services and supports we're providing our students with those good cause exemptions to make sure that they're finding success on this test.
So, they have an exemption and they don't have to pass it, but they have to, but they have to take it anyway.
They have to take it, and if they do not pass, even though they're able to move forward, it still is a did not pass. And so, obviously, we want all students to pass this test.
Right, yeah, and it's reflective of our results.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, are a, are you implying that a majority of these eighty-seven or even ninety students are at one building, or is it?
No, across all, across all seven of our elementary schools.
Okay.
Yep, and we've looked at all of that information and data pretty closely already. Um, and again, um, that's because all of our buildings serve students that are in these subgroups. And we're seeing the system-wide, the consistency system-wide across all seven of our elementary schools, which is why we wanted to meet with all seven of our principals, because it was clearly, and that was the first question I had when I saw the overall data, I wanna see the individual building data to see, is this a particular school? Or is this a systems-wide thing? And it is systems-wide, so it's something that we're gonna tackle together, systems-wide.
Is it, oh, go ahead.
Of the three, of the three that didn't pass, will they pass the next round? I mean, the, 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 they got held back.
That would be the goal, yes.
I mean, just, what's your, I don't even know, you think they could pass, is it, or is it just?
Yeah, and I would have to go back and look at those three students and see where their scores were. But yes, I mean, and they'll have to take it, just FYI, students who do not pass have to take it until they do pass.
Yeah.
Through sixth grade. So, the goal is gonna be, they're getting targeted support at that building, so that they, they pass.
So, they'll, they'll, these three that didn't pass, they will continue to take it until sixth grade regardless, but just held back one time?
Yeah, what happens if they don't pass it again?
So, when you look on, when you look on the, up here.
Yes.
Once they don't pass in third grade, then they are moved forward. So, they're retained in third grade. And then if they don't pass again, they then would move, but they would still take that test.
With some kind of intensive help along the way as much as we can.
Of course, yeah. And that's where the, and I will tell you that when talking to the principals of those three students, um, like, it, it was hard, because they had hard conversations with parents this summer. They have plans of action in place, thinking about how they're serving the students so that, to get them over that, to pass. Um, but the other thing is that our students with a good cause exemption also have to take the test again.
Okay.
So, they will also, if they had a good cause exemption, they're in fourth grade now, but they will have to take I READ in fourth grade. If they don't pass in fourth, they'll take it in fifth, if they don't pass in fifth, they'll take it in sixth.
And the test they retake this time, goes up a grade level from third to fourth?
No, it'll still be that third grade test.
They'll still take that third grade test.
That test, yeah. But, but if they don't, if they don't pass it in second grade, then they go to the summer school program. Yes. Correct? So, of these ninety, the eighty-seven plus the three, of these ninety, did all of them attend the tutoring program in the summer? Not all of them did, so sometimes parents choose, we, we cannot make them come, that we can highly encourage it to. Um, I think two of them did, that I'd go back and check.
So, I'm just wondering how successful that, do you think that program is successful? I mean, do you think there would have been more than ninety that wouldn't have passed?
I think that's a great question. I think we always have a few more pass in the summer, but it's usually not everybody that comes. And so, um, to be able to pull together even the third grade teachers that taught, um, to have conversations around it, I think is important. But also, as we have these conversations with our principals, really thinking through, is there a different way to look at the summer programming? Is it something that's serving us the way it needs to?
A little bit, yeah. Yeah, because two of the three, she said, did attend the summer's program.
And I said, I think so, I would need to go back and check. But, but then you would question to two of those three, should they have an exemption? Is, is there really an underlying?
Right.
Learning issue, right.
So, are you saying, okay, so in twenty eighteen, we had thirty-three not pass, and in twenty twenty-five, we had ninety not pass? Did you mention that you, that the sixty difference there is mostly contributed to multilingual learners? Or, or there, like, i- is there a breakdown for that ninety? Are they the free and reduced, are they multilingual learners?
Of the eighty, of the eighty.
Why is there the increase?
Of the eighty-seven that are there, they are either special education students and/or multilingual learners.
Okay, and our amount.
That comprises the total of the eighty-seven that's listed.
And our amount of multilingual learners has drastically increased from twenty eighteen till twenty twenty-five. So, not really showing that we have a systematic problem with reading, but we have an increase in multilingual learners that we have to serve and support and assist with.
I would say that what it represents is our reality as a district and the community we serve, and we need to.
Find ways to address that.
To make sure those kids are successful.
And how, how are some, what are some of the ways that you are addressing that? Like specifically, like how?
One, I do think our, we have a new core curriculum. And so, that core definitely raises the level of rigor. Um, of what students are doing, and we have been really good. It's one of the things I think, um, has been lovely about Noblesville. Yet also, um, we've been really good at saying we're gonna meet kids where they are and move them forward. And, um, through that, we've had lots of working at your instructional level. And so, thinking through, where's the bar? And where, how are we getting into that bar? This new core curriculum sets the bar high, and kids are working through that. And so, there's a different level of stamina that we're noticing with kids in the classroom for both and for the teachers right now, because it is definitely different. And they have a full hour, um, in K through two, they have a full hour of, um, skills work, which is thinking through phonics, phonetic awareness, um, kind of those foundational skills that our K through two kids need. And then they have an hour of knowledge work, which is really building that background knowledge for kids. It's a, uh, knowledge building program, and they're building that background knowledge, and they're, um, entering into topics where a lot of times even the content is gonna be a little above. There's a lot of listening to during that time and learning and really thinking through, um, how are we, how are we really equipping them into understanding and building knowledge base? So, they're, they're, the kids are actually, it's been very fun to see, they're loving it. There's a, you know, teachers, it's definitely, it's hard, it's, it's a different. And so, I think everyone's getting used to that difference.
Yeah. Um. And if I remember correctly, the, the ELA. I was gonna bring this up, has a multilingual. Had a lot of ML supports built in.
But the teachers have to, they have to get edu, you know, I mean, there's a big learning curve there. Like, not only are they teaching a new curriculum, but then they have to be able to sidestep and be like, okay, what's that multilingual component? So, as the, maybe the time goes on, that will get better too, they'll get more comfortable?
Yes, and we're already having conversations around multilingual learners. Shelley has been working with the ML team and really thinking through, and many of our, on the PD day, many of our buildings had some work in the morning that was focused on multilingual learners.
Yeah.
And really unpacking the curriculum to see where, because there are supports built in already for multilingual learners, there are supports built in for kids who are struggling. And then, um, there's also Language Studio, which is an additional support that the ML teachers are gonna be learning more about in order to help use and support. So, Shelley, um, and Lauren were able to, um, wa- walk through just what Language Studio looks like, um, at a meeting like two weeks ago. Um, so, yes, so there's like, there's a lot of core support. All of our buildings have in their schedules an additional thirty minutes in K through four. Um, fifth grade has an additional forty-five minutes, um, for just additional time where that tier-two work happens. So, basically, during that time, there's no, no new instruction. And so, that's where they're really looking at their building-wide data and determining what kids need during that time, either enrichment or remediation, but no new instruction. And then on top of that, they have an additional thirty minutes, um, for small group instruction. Um, could be in either reading or math during that time. And so, really having to hone in on what that looks like. We also are working on just some systems-wide pieces where we need to, we have not really come back to our MTSS, multi-tiered system of supports, um, like to revamp what that looks like. And so, we actually have a workshop this Thursday and Friday. We have about eighty-five, um, educators that are gonna be here. Our building principals will be here, um, K twelve, and we'll be looking at just our MTSS system, doing some learning together. And really, what we think will happen is we're gonna have some mind shifts in what that looks like through the conversations that we have, so we're excited about that. Of the eighty-seven, uh, were more of those ML or?
Have to go.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, what, I think it's, I think it's.
I think we've had those in the past.
I think we've had that in the past.
At the risk of misspeaking, not having, I, I, I do believe off memory from last that had that reported, it was more special education than ML.
Okay.
And that population in general is larger.
It is, it's larger than the ML population, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
About eighteen percent of our student population in Noblesville has an IEP.
Eighteen percent.
About eighteen percent.
So, you can't be special at animal language, are you one or the other? Okay, so there can be ones who have an IEP that are multilingual learners at the same time.
And that's why I've been careful to say today, either an IEP and/or.
And, okay.
Yes.
And I know that they mentioned that the Noblesville Youth Assistance for the tutoring, that that helped tremendously with this, and that's during the school year, right? Not in the summer? So, um, is that, is that after school or like in? Did some of these students get that tutoring?
Yeah, so it's, yes, it's after school. Um, it's about one teacher to every three to four students. Um, and so, that, that was very helpful. I think we had seventy-four percent. I'd have to go back to, um, to look at that, that, that pass that were also in that tutoring. So, I. So I think those, that's other information. We can go back and, because I want to make sure we're giving accurate numbers. So you can go back and look at these numbers and get some of this information to you.
It'd be great to know what's working, like if there's something that's working, like. So how many educators do we have employed in our school?
Educator?
Mm-hmm.
Educator.
Teachers. Well, the eight, the group of eighty-five that are coming, are those teachers? Because I feel, my first impression is, I feel like that's kind of a low turnout, but I don't know the big, the grand pool of educators you're using.
So the goal for this Thursday and Friday is to build leadership capacity for them to take that work back to their buildings. So we would, we would not be able to bring everybody. Yeah. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We had to scale it back a little, realized we've got to.
Okay.
Maybe block school.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
And I mean, and that's a good point too, with, I mean, you and Lauren and Shelley all have to, I'm sure immerse yourself into this new curriculum. So that you know how to better support the ML and.
Yes, yeah. And we're having ongoing conversations, check-ins with our principals. Um, we have another one this next week, check-in. Um, our administrators and instructional coaches coming together. We're going to be doing, starting learning walks in September, mainly just to be getting in and out of rooms. And, um, looking at engagement and also just the, the classroom environment. And that's going to be that focus in September. We'll have a focus every month to really think about what is it we're going in and looking at. Um, and they're going to do some cross-building, um, visits for that. So that they're getting into other buildings, classrooms. And that was one of the things they talked a lot about last year. And so really putting that into effect. And then, uh, Lauren, Shelley and I are getting out. I've already done, I go to Stoney tomorrow, but I've done an initial walkthrough during C Cal A with all our principals and then Heidi tomorrow. So, so yeah, so I mean, we're learning and we're trying to go quickly because it's important. And it, we, you know, we want our kids to get the best that they can get. And so, um, we're, you know, we have documents of ongoing questions that we're keeping track of. And talk about ways to get feedback from teachers, um, to add that piece into it. So I feel like we have a, a decent ongoing feedback loop. Um, but it's definitely, it's going to take us all to, to make it happen with the new curriculum.
Yeah, definitely all hands on deck.
Yeah, so all students take it? So the students that are, that are not in a Gen A classroom, do they take the test? So, I mean, where, where does it stop? Just, like, where's it stop with someone with an IEP? Does every, every student takes it, no matter what their abilities?
Terms of I read?
Yes.
I think even if they just arrived to the country yesterday, they still have to take it, right?
I'm talking about more, with, with special ed. Yes, they, they take it. They take it, even if they're in a. Classroom, not.
Life skills.
Life skills. That's what I'm, my question, like, how do they, no? Not, not FAP, um.
Okay.
So basically, students that are in our applied program, which was FAP and life skills. Those students, there's an alternative assessment.
Okay.
Suite of assessments that students take that are applied skill students as they progress through school.
Okay, so not, no, those students do not take this. It's just students that have an IEP that are basically in, in a, in a regular classroom that are, that can, they're pulled out or have additional help.
There, there are multiple, we call them exceptionalities. There are multiple exceptionalities within, under the umbrella of special education.
Right.
From emotional disabilities to specific learning disabilities to other health impairments to autism spectrum. I mean, there's a whole laundry list of different exceptionalities that are captured under the umbrella term of special education.
Right.
And so we know that these students represent many different exceptionalities across the population of special education students in Noblesville.
Okay.
Yep. Other questions on I read? Are we doing on time? Okay.
Oh, David's, David's the last to jump on.
It is one fifty-five.
I just want to make sure.
Before, before we leave this board, I, I feel like I've been speaking to. Point, and so did Ryan, that we, we had a meeting last week, um, I called. Edition. Excuse me. Worked on this, we, um, I'm going to, I'm going to get celebrations where they're due. Very exciting that the lowest number of students in a long time that don't have a good cause exemption. That that was our experience this year, that, that is cause for celebration, that is a good thing. However, I'm going to, I'm a person who doesn't look at that part. I look at the negative part of this way. I fixate. I, we're not a piece at all, that even though, yes, eighty-seven students have good cause exemptions, it will obviously get to move on and whatnot. We, we believe in those schools and we affirm this in that meeting on, on Thursday morning, that our goal is always. Child will read by the end of the. That is our goal, that is what we do. Um, and so. I'll, I'll. Right, happening. Um, we called that meeting, I was. And we before. Yeah. Conversation, I think, I, I appreciate Missy's question a minute ago. Um, this is not isolated to one specific school. Some schools saw, I mean, it, it's in your packet here. Some schools have higher pass rates than others, of course, there's variations. But at the end of the day, there are just some things, I think we need to take a step back and just think about it, just as a district. Hey, how are we serving the kids that fit in that yellow and then yellow bubble? Because I think it's time for us to revisit some of the ways we're deploying, how we, how we reach those things. Um, it was a great conversation. We, we had some very honest, open, uh, discussion. But I think everyone left that meeting energized and, and excited about the work ahead. Um, feeling like, hey, we, we're going to do this and it's, it's really, it's an exciting time to be here. But I want to hear you say clearly before we leave this slide. You've also stated very clearly last week, this is priority one. Learning department this year. This is priority one. Um, and our energy and focus is going to go to this. The complicator that we've added is this new curriculum. If that is going to be, it's a big lift, we're going to talk a lot about that. But at the same time, I've, I'm already hearing the people who are saying, say, yeah, this is hard in year one, but man, is it going to make a difference? Because the rigor has completely increased. And when our kids are going to get out of it, it's so much better. We just need to get, you know, get in the flow now, building this new curriculum, so. Um, anyway, I just want to leave that from my seat. And I, and I see our role, some of us, you know, me who's not always in the, in the day-to-day work of learning department as. Principals, teachers, to tell us what you need, how, how can we better bring supports and give you the structures to, to better serve these kids? Um, and that was, that's also a big part of our conversation last Thursday and what we're going to talk about this week too. Um, you know, what do we, what do we need to be doing? And I think there's some awesome ideas out there, great ideas already thrown out. But. Anyway. I'll stop there, but.
Okay, all right. So moving on to SAT, so just a reminder that in Indiana. Uh, the accountability assessment currently. Um, is SAT. Um, it is the SAT. It's not a specialized version of SAT. It is the SAT that students would also take, um, for purposes of college admissions. So pretty high bar there. Um, again, just as with the past two, I learned and I read, we've also contextualized. Um, with percentiles, again, for you to be able to see. So there are two tests, evidence-based reading and writing, and then also math. And so on the left, you can see where Noblesville's percentage of pass is relative to the states. Which is, remains well above the state average. Same with math also. Indiana versus Noblesville's pass percentage, students do take this test in eleventh grade. And then also you can see the trend from twenty twenty-two all the way through twenty twenty-five. We've provided four years worth of data there. Um, you can see, um, we've kind of bounced between eighty-fourth up to eighty-six and eighty-eighth, and then back to eighty-third percentile. Um, among all Indiana high schools on the evidence-based reading and writing. And then with Indiana for math, again, kind of bounced around from eighty-sixth up to eighty-ninth, ninety-second, and then back to eighty-eighth. So we saw that our students' performance in terms of pass rate on Indiana SAT. Um, on both the reading, writing and math, this last year was a little bit less than what it was the year prior. Um, but still relatively strong. Uh, but obviously, again. I mean, same point we made with I read. Our goal is, we want more students always demonstrating proficiency on these types of assessments. So that's SAT. Any questions? Or move on to AP?
Kind of opposite of that point I made before.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well.
I'll see to that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Group of people. Right.
Much less. This is, as in I learn, there are lots of.
Do, do, we're all, they're all, they're all sort of required to take it now. All students are sort of required to take the SATs, correct?
It is the accountability. So remember, there's federal accountability and state accountability. So we have to have an accountability measure at the high school level. And Indiana has determined that SAT is that measure.
Correct.
They're required to take the PSAT also, right? But we don't ever look at those results?
We do.
We do. How, are they similar to the SAT?
Well, I think we look at it for a different reason. I, the high school team will look at that data to assess effectiveness early on of maybe any programming for kids.
Leading up to the SAT.
Leading up to the SAT, yes.
Like, okay, right. You might need some intervention or extra help if you're college-bound and want to, okay.
The ACT, so.
I'm sorry?
ACT, is that still, okay.
Yes.
And also the, as far as multilingual support, or like PSAT and SAT, is that? Every bit as good as, um, I mean, all the languages and support going into that pre-testing, um.
The needs are there at the high school, just as the needs are there for students at the middle and elementary level when they're taking I read and I learn also. And so the goal is, I mean, just as in elementary and middle school. Kids in high school are also going to have an individualized learning plan that's going to be written. That ILP is going to be based upon their level of English proficiency. And then what kinds of services and supports that they need at the high school. And then we have those services and supports available at the high school, as well as us always. Working to level up our general classroom teachers' expertise in also teaching classrooms. That are diverse, that have students that are in those classrooms with students that have ILPs. At various levels of language proficiency, and also students that have special needs and have IEPs that also need to be followed. And so that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing project. We're always working to improve teachers' capacity in that way. I mean, we mentioned the PL Day, we had sessions on the PL Day both last year and this year, the first one we had. Uh, for teachers to continue to build their repertoire of instructional strategies. You know, those tools that they have in their toolbox as a teacher that they can use to help support those students and their needs, so.
The other thing, um, free and reduced lunch, evidence. As, as far as charting that versus our test scores. You know, what, what is ours right now?
It was thirty percent, it's like twenty-eight maybe.
So this was.
Somewhere in there.
Four years ago was twenty-three percent?
We are on an upward trend.
Yeah.
So right now, we're at thirty percent of our students.
District-wise, we're, we're pretty close to thirty.
That's a significant.
That's a lot.
That's a significant.
Be in the twenties now.
Yeah.
So.
And in your, and in your individual.
About that at all here.
Well, and in your individual packet, that, those subgroups, we didn't put it here for purposes of it being too much trouble on a slide. But in your packet, you have the breakdowns, uh, by lunch status, special education, ML as well, and you could see those data.
Okay.
Um. Just for my, or even anybody's future reference, when we're going through this packet. Um, to backtrack a little bit, um, on the I read pass rates by school, there's little dots, green and yellow dots. What do those mean?
Oh, was there not a key in there?
There is. The yellow is, the yellow is that they're close to the ninety-five percent.
Some language about it.
Okay, okay, sorry. I don't read, I look at pictures.
I do that too. I like picture books.
You scared me, I thought we had missed.
You said the district goal is to be at ninety-five percent, is that what?
Ninety-five percent or above.
Yeah, because that is the state's.
That is the state's.
That's the state's goal. Oh, that's right, I was wondering.
We want to align.
Yeah, okay.
Brad, to your question about, um, lunch status, if you look at page eight. SA, SAT by lunch status is on there. If you look at page six, I read by lunch status is on there, and I'm going to guess if I go back, I learned is probably.
Oh.
Yeah, there are breakouts there. Yeah, top of H two, I learned.
Okay.
And you, and you'll see, you'll see a gap.
Yeah.
People notice that if you control for that factor. Um. Performance is very different.
And I, and I think to Dr. Howes' earlier point. We, we are responsible for meeting the needs of all students in this community, regardless of background. And, um, we have seen some of these populations of students increase. And so our goal is to reflect inward, assess our data. And then determine what's the right path forward, so that every student has the opportunity to be successful. Yeah.
Thank you.
Or the record I just published.
Yeah, and, because that is the thing, I mean, we shared it so you understand it, and it's important to understand. And I, I said a different way, but Ryan's saying, we're not going to sit here and say, well, that's an excuse why we can't. No, our, our goal is still exactly what I said a minute ago, to get there.
Right.
But yes, there are factors that are changing the landscape, and we have to figure out what to do to help.
And there are things that we're doing, or the, like, uh, field for school. There's, I mean, there are a number of organizations that are trying to help with that.
There are.
It's just an ongoing battle that you have to.
Well, the two that I was mentioning earlier. That's a huge part that, that we have here, and that is definitely helping some kids out. We're very thankful for that, and we'll keep, continue to have that.
Yeah, I mean, I've been on the board for five years and we talk about subgroups every year. We do, e- every year.
It matters.
It matters.
Well, no, and I'm, I'm like, okay, so what's working? Like, we talk about every year, how are we making growth? How are we going forward? What steps are we taking? What works? What doesn't work? What's changing? All of those things, like. Because, like you said, it's a constant battle and it is a landscape that's constantly changing. Right. A very complicated issue. Right. 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 I mean, there's a. Right.
And those subgroups are going to get bigger. I mean, anybody who thinks they're not going to grow.
Right.
They're, I mean, Noblesville's becoming more and more diverse and, and those groups are going to continue to grow, it's not, you know?
Yep.
It's a hard, it's hard.
It's hard, yep.
Thank you for all you do, guys. Thank you for working on.
One more, last one.
AP, these are very, these are very positive.
And we don't have twenty twenty-five data yet, so we didn't have that available to us, so we don't have that yet. But when we get it, we can report it out. But this just shows you trends in terms of AP enrollments. Total number of students that are taking at least one AP. Uh, course, the number of exams that have been taken, and then the number of students that are scoring that three plus. That's kind of that benchmark that we look for. Um, and so you can see the exam results also, um, for Noblesville. In terms of the percentage of AP exam scores with three or higher, that's seventy-five percent. As opposed to Indiana's at sixty-five percent. So again, like others, well above state average, something that, um, we're pleased with, but always continuing to try to improve and get better. Um, over time, so.
But it's like, we do this well.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
We do this well.
This is the group that we service well.
We do this well.
That we do well, so we need to find, we need to find, we need to find the magic in this and, and kind of.
Smart kids.
And, and yeah.
Find the magic.
Find the magic.
So Ryan, the number of exams taken.
Yeah.
The number of exams taken in twenty twenty-four is fourteen fifty-nine.
Yeah.
And then the number of students scoring at three or more, is this? So the number, those students could be potentially taking them more, obviously.
That's correct.
Okay.
We have students that take multiple AP.
Right.
Uh, classes, so that's why the numbers don't match.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Oh, I, last thing, just with the new diploma, three years to implementation, right?
Well, we're implementing now.
What, the first.
Because the, because the new requirements, yes, the new requirements apply to the current freshman class. And so we, like all other districts across the state, are simultaneously, concurrently running. Cohorts of students that are on different sets of requirements.
Right.
Which is.
That's where I was going to go with this.
Is a bit of a challenge that all districts and high schools have had to face and, and head on because um, and our counselors are on the front line of that, and we're trying to do what we can to make sure we support our counselors with systems and resources because they are having to track all of these various requirements and with these different cohorts of students.
So scoring uh in the future, you may have less AP exams taken necessarily, maybe.
Right.
That's an excellent. Or you may, if you know, if you're on enrollment path.
Yep.
Is it, but you, you may have all sorts of certificates received or apprenticeship, so it's, it's really gonna.
Yes. Yeah, that's an excellent observation that as students matriculate through the system on the new dipl- new diploma requirements, there are multiple pathways that are encouraged. And so you may see students that are enrolling in different, you say, you'll see trends that may shift in terms of students enrolling in AP versus dual credit, um, versus pathways through CTE, um, you're gonna see, you're gonna see changes in trends over time because of that. And we'll know what that looks like until it plays out.
Just out of curiosity, do AP and dual credit have different rigor?
So AP and dual credit, a lot of folks will um, talk about the two as though they're the same, but they're, they're actually not. So AP courses are courses that are considered college-level rigor. The curriculum is written and provided by the College Board, which is the same organization that writes and administers the SAT. Colleges can choose individually whether or not to accept an AP course for college credit when that student involves in college. Dual credit is different in that dual credit is a partnership between Noblesville High School or the school that's offering the course and a university partner. And that course does come with credit. And so that's why it's called dual credit.
Right.
And so, for example, students may be taking a dual-credit English class.
Right.
Taught by a high school teacher, Noblesville High School, but that student, maybe through IU, that student is going to receive that dual credit. They may be taking an AP English course. It's different. It's not through a university, it's through the College Board.
Right.
And that student may or may not receive credit for that AP course in college, depending on what college they apply to and they're admitted to.
But you don't know if in general, if the rigor is different. Like, i- is an AP course about the same as a dual-credit course?
They're both meant to be college-level coursework. So AP coursework is college-level coursework.
Like who's writing the curriculum? Right. Right.
Yeah.
It seems like it is.
They're both, they're both considered to be highly rigorous.
Yeah.
Forces.
I was just curious.
Well, I think it's important to remember too, is the, the dual credit, they can earn that college or that university-specific credit. But it could be transferable to another university if the student wanted to go elsewhere, but not always.
Right, it's not either.
But at least, yeah, but at least with dual credits, if they don't take it as the class they took, they'll take it as an elective. And that's what happened to both my kids. They took dual credits and they didn't get the English credit, but they got it as a lec- at least the credit for something.
And so when you think about what I mentioned before with our counselors being on the front lines, they have to be knowledgeable at least. And they have to be knowledgeable and understanding of what all of the different local universities are looking for. So that, so they're working with students and their families and they say, well, my goal is to go to IU or Purdue or wherever it may be. They've got to be familiar enough to know how to counsel that student in the right way on, do I take dual credit? Do I take AP or not? Like, it's a lot um, for them to have to manage in the best of times.
Yeah.
Let alone now where they've got different cohorts on different sets.
Well, yeah, and that's what I was gonna say too, is, I mean, that's an important thing to note as well, is with the high school counselors, they service students separated by alphabet, not grade. So they don't follow. So they have freshmen. They know both, they have to know both requirements for both.
True.
Mm-hmm.
That would be even.
Yeah.
Difficult, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, it's nice though, cause they have them the whole, hopefully, they have them the whole four years, right? So that's, that's the positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the positive. Okay.
But like in middle school, the counselors do follow the student per grade, but when they get to high school, it's by alphabet.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Up next. Thank you. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Up next, we have finance.
You only have fifteen minutes.
Chalk chalk.
Okay, well, this, uh, here we go.
Thanks.
All right, boy, thank you for the, the time this afternoon. So my update on the finance side today will be uh, three parts. Uh, quick update on real estate, quick update on budget, and then final update on capital projects and, and where we're, where we stand on status on those. So uh, starting first with real estate, maybe recall back to our capital meeting that we had, uh, gosh, a few uh, months back, we, we talked about the capital plan. Mentioned this parcel directly to the south of us here. So right away, I'll tell you that there's no update. It relates to that parcel right out there. So basically this parking lot right out here. In fact, you can see all the, all the cars that park in there. A lot of those are apartment cars. And so if we did inherit that, that could actually be a headache anyway, but um, and when we do have an update, I'll definitely let you know in terms of what's the, the status there.
Uh, how much is that ours?
So actually about eight feet outside this building is ours.
Yeah.
Eight, how much?
About eight to ten feet.
Yeah.
So none of that parking lot is technically ours.
Okay, the first parking spots.
Yeah, just the grass.
Correct.
Okay.
Got it. Yeah, so we actually have an easement for that parking lot for two rows of parking. So that's where, you know, from the attorney's speak, that's a little bit ambiguous. What is two rows?
Yeah.
Uh, they'd like to think that that's two rows based on what it was at the point in time that that easement was granted, which would be very generous in our favor. So that's where I think that there's some issue with selling it, but that also is where there's issues when it comes to appraising that property. In other words, we tend to have all the advantage on the appraisal standpoint, which is really where there's some issue there, because we say it's worth this much, they say it's worth this much. What can they do with it this much? Not much, because someone's gonna come and, a developer come look at and say, well, you have this easement for two parking rows, a parking row, was a parking with the school, so we, we can't do anything there. So that's where we're kind of holding out and saying, you know, it's, it's only worth, you know, what we think it's worth because of the easement place.
Are they trying to buy, who's trying to buy it?
Uh, no one else, to my knowledge, but um, it, it's kind of, it'd be nice for us because we know that there is a um, a, kind of an issue with this entrance back here. If you ever come in that way, it's, it's not configured correctly. So we kind of worry about, you know, could there be accidents? Who'd be responsible? We would say that, of course, the owner would be responsible. And that's what we're saying for, you know, for the safety of our employees, it'd be great if they could just fix this up and, and make it a better lot for us. And that's, of course, if we were to do that, that's what we could do with that. With the lot there.
Right, thanks.
So no update there. There is an update however, uh, the, the property on Field Drive. So you may recall, uh, uh, speaking that, hey, at that point in time, that we definitely have interest in this. And so from that meeting forward, I worked with our legal counsel to uh, to reach out to the owner of this six-acre parcel here in red. Uh, so since that point in time, our attorney uh, has been in contact with the, the family and uh, speaking originally out of anonymity of his client, said that, you know, hey, I have an interested party, are you guys willing to sell? Uh, they eventually uh, got to the point that it was, it was a school that was interested, which I think was the right thing to do, because they were very interested in selling this property to the school. So what that means for us now is that our attorney is currently working uh, through a legal document called a right of first refusal for an offer to purchase the property, which means that um, from their standpoint, uh, the woman that lives there, they want um, uh, their mother to, to live out her days there. She's currently ninety-five. And so we don't know when that would be, uh, but the, this uh, legal document would in essence give us the right of first refusal to uh, match any offer that they would have in the future. Which is really the legal way of kind of solidifying our position as it relates to uh, getting that property in, in, in the future. One aspect of this document though is that it would be, uh, they would want twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we would write twenty-five thousand dollars into the purchase price, so that would mean that that would carry into the purchase price in the future, but just want to make you uh, well aware that um, in executing a document like this, which hasn't been executed yet, uh, once we get their signature on something like this, it would probably be, uh, either September or the October board meeting that uh, we'd bring it to the board for a, you know, an action item or so forth to, to approve. And we still need to work with counsel to determine what exactly that would look like in terms of the action item. Uh, but again, at this point in time, we're working on um, executing that right of first refusal to um, have an offer on the property as soon as they're willing to sell in the future.
Twenty-five thousand acres?
I thought it was an additional amount.
Yeah, so now, you said it would go towards the purchase, right? So how long would this offer be in place? I mean.
But that is a recorded document on the property. So, yeah, so as you know, that's permanent.
Yeah, okay. So until she passes, it's effective.
Yeah, and so meaning that if, you know, the, somehow uh, they would go through a sale transaction in the future and, you know, goes through the title process, they would see, whoa, there's this, did this school ever have a right to buy this first? Like, it would just stop that in the tracks before it ever transacts or uh, get a new owner.
You say five acres?
So this is actually six acres. Uh, sorry, it's a little uh, kind of blurry up there.
Oh, that just applies to the six.
So just the, the six acres there, yeah.
Um, and is it zoned? Okay, it's zoned.
We would have no issue, uh, from what I'm told from our attorney to go through the legal process to get it to where we need to be, to do whatever we want to do with it.
To know that, because we don't want to buy it and then we can't change the zoning.
What's the approximate value?
Well, and in that case, uh, for any property that we would uh, ever purchase, it's gonna be the average of two appraisals. Um, so as it relates to that property, I, you know, um, I would get, I don't even know if I want to throw out a number of a guess, but. Yeah, they would just need to go through the appraisal.
And it depends if it's the share of five years, for years.
Right.
Yeah.
It's worth what someone's willing to pay for it.
But, you know, obviously, we, we felt like that's, you know, really exciting progress as it relates to that property, you know, that they're interested in, in the school, because we, we all know just kind of how valuable that is to us to be able to, um, we, we all know that um, an early childhood center is, is in the future, you know, how soon? Well, could it be here? We don't even know, but we do know one thing that as it relates to this property, we, as they stand now, would, would not want to pass it on until um, until the owner does, but uh, either way, it, I think it'd be an opportunity to set Noblesville Schools up well in the future for anything else that could potentially go there in the future.
Great.
Yep.
Then I got a, uh, shortly after we were making progress on that, I got a call uh, one day uh, from a real estate agent for the two acres then directly to the east that parcel there in orange, saying that the, the owner of that property uh, wants to, to move on. Uh, she wants to downsize and with that, uh, realized that, I guess, neighbors talking.
They sure do.
Yeah, we, uh, we know that the school. Yes. Acres here to the, uh, the west, um, are you interested in the, the two acres here to the east? And it's, it was to say quickly, yeah, you know, of course we would be, because again, to have, yes, we could do what we want to on six, but to have the A would be, you know, again, further set Noblesville Schools up, position them well for extended campus there. Uh, just on that side of Field Drive. So what we're working on now with uh, between uh, the, the real estate agent and then again through our legal counsel is, is, would be a purchase agreement going through, that would uh, get us to the, the point that we would have uh, again, the average of two appraisals. So that way, again, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be some egregious price, but we'd have to go through really what is the legal process. Uh, in terms of what is the, the next step for the, for the board, I'm still need to, and whether, like, how that action looks, need to def- define that with our legal counsel. Uh, because of one wrinkle here, and that is the fact that the funds that, so that would be an immediate purchase, right? And so wi- without having the six kind of locked up, we of course want to make sure everything works chronologically here, that we, we lock in the, this, the uh, the right of first refusal here, get that signed before we move forward on the two, right? Cause it just doesn't really make sense to do the two, right? So, um, so we, we need to get the um, the assigned purchase agreement with them, but we need to purchase that now. And, and with that being said, ha- have the cash on hand, the cash that I would be able to use is, is currently in uh, from, from a bond, uh, excess bond proceeds uh, fr- from interest and, and underspend in, it'd be the twenty-twenty-two bond. So that's actually from the bond for the high school athletic addition, still having some interest funds in that. Uh, in that bond. With that being said, uh, that those are technically building corporation funds, right? That was a lease deal, not a general obligation deal like the last two bonds that we've sold. So with that being a, a lease, uh, this is again, something I still need to work out with legal counsel, just want to give you the, the full uh, story here, background. They will probably want to run that through as a building corporation property. So as opposed to, again, legally speaking, a building corporation versus the, the school district property, because of the funds that we're using are from the, the lease, uh, which was building corporation funds at the point of the bond. So still need to kind of hash out that, that level of detail and, and what that looks like in terms of a board action, especially if we use uh, those sort of bond proceeds. But I just want to make you, you know, fully aware that uh, there could be some action in the future, but either way, we'll, we'll keep up to speed in terms of how these progress.
And could we then transfer it after it's bought? After, after it's purchased, transfer it?
Yeah, well, in fact, they actually may say it'd be better to keep it. There's like pros and cons to each of it, and I don't know all of the ins and outs of it with the building corporation uh, pros too. But I think it may be a, a benefit as we develop then in the future, because it, it would likely be a lease deal that we would do in the future anyway.
Oh.
And so if it's a lease, then uh, it's already in the building corporate.
It have a, it'd be a different entity to lease from, yeah.
Yeah.
So two questions. One is, so we're definitely interested in that two-acre parcel regardless of what happens with the six acre? What would we do with just two?
No, that's what David said. That's why he said it's important to go in order to make sure we know for sure the six is locked down before we would buy the two, because no, we don't need a two acre slice.
Right in between two homes.
In between things we can't own.
Okay.
That's why he's trying to sort out, make sure the six acre thing.
Okay.
And get.
Well, my second concern is if we go forward with the purchase of the two acres before the six acre is a done deal, um, I feel like that kind of gives them the ability to strong-arm us because they know we really want the six acres now that we've already locked in the two acres.
Yeah, yeah. And I've thought about that as well, and I've even talked through that scenario with our attorney and, you know, part of this is um, you know, a lot based on his conversations he's having. And, and like I mentioned, you know, they're supportive of selling it to the school and they fully understand that the two appraisal, the legal process we have to go through to sell it at a, an appraised market value, basically. Um, you know, the other, so we, we don't feel like there'd be any kind of shenanigans as, as you, you know, as he, he said in terms of them potentially doing that. And even if they were to do something like that, I think then that's where, you know, I think another potential buyer could come in, and I think that that's something that would maybe be a little bit more publicized and, and any potential buyer would maybe even stay away from something like that, because they know that the school could potentially just do something like eminent domain. In that case, right? And say, well, look, this was already lined up, you know, I don't want anything to do with that, because they, they, the school was already making plans and they could just get this property for, for market value anyway. So it'd be a good point, we kind of talked through what that could look like, and I think at the end of the day, we have the right tools to be able to get through something like that.
And if it's filed and attached to, to the piece of property, it's gonna be tough for somebody else to.
Yes, yes, it'd be recorded.
Yes, it's recorded, yeah.
But I, and I don't remember what we talked about last time we talked about this, um, but just, one of the, one of the things I love about this spot in particular is as we think about, a few, we've kicked around different projects. We're thinking, well, we'll, we'll just own this whole block here.
Yeah.
Beyond the, the quest for total domination, that's not where I was going with that. Well, some of the things that Dave and I talked about early on with this though, in my opinion, this could lead to some efficiencies, because you, houses are gone, that becomes a place we put a building, so let's just save, really, etcetera, because that's what I got a few ideas out there. Right there on the left.
It expands.
Save some money because that parking lot's on a new story today, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Plus, yes, it's on our campus.
Right.
Our, and if, on projects, we better lock, keep an eye out for reasonably placed.
Yeah.
Doing all the dominoes fall.
What's directly to the north?
Mm-hmm.
Is the um, can't think of the. Edition, housing edition, what is that?
Fairfield Farms, isn't it?
Yeah, it's Fairfield.
How, how close is that?
It's close.
Part of a house?
I mean, there's a little bit of woods and then a fence and then a house.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, I mean, who knows, potentially down the road, the property off to the right there. If we've got business and buildings there, they might be like, oh, I'm done.
Yeah.
So.
It's a big, it looks like a big house with a pool, but, yeah, yeah.
The thing you can't really see too on this though, is elevation starts to play a factor there though. Even on the eastern part of this two acres, it starts to go up, you know, nothing that we couldn't retain, but then it starts to go up a little bit more. So elevation starts to play a little bit of a role that um, yeah, you think about, you go up the hill to the community center, right?
Yeah.
So you said that the plan would be to purchase these two acres from a bond that we have leftover investments with, correct? So you must have a general idea of what those two acres are maybe going to cost to know that we can cover it?
Yeah, good point. So on the two acres, uh, I, I would say at this point, because we're still kind of going back and forth, it, it'd be in the three hundred thousand, it's probably the high threes.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're still trying.
Three hundred thousand for the, for the whole?
Just the two.
For the two.
That sounds, that seems actually kind of reasonable, right? Where can I sign? I mean, is the house.
The house is over. And one of the things too that uh, we're, we're suggesting is appealing to sell to the school is that like in her situation, I think i- in the future, like trying to get all that iron out is that, you know, we can say rent free for X number of months, right? Like we're not in a hurry, right? And we have a cash transaction, we have a cash deal.
Yes.
Uh, you know, and with the house being in its repair, like, uh, or in its state, I should say, that if you want to take the appliances, fine, you know, so there's some things where that are definitely appealing, I think, to a school sale.
That's exciting.
Win-win, okay.
Very exciting.
Very good.
But they're ready to go now, right?
Yeah, they, they would like to get the purchase, uh, you know.
Okay.
Arrangements wrapped up soon. So that, that one could definitely be, be um, accelerated here pretty quickly.
Okay.
And so, yes, we'll keep, keep you updated on, on next steps there.
So with that being such a good price, maybe that'll help the appraisal on our side for the six acres.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, they gotta.
That's it on the property front. So now I'm gonna shift over to uh, the budget side of things and, and talk uh, look, first about uh, the funding formula and then some of the factors that are going into budget preparation right now. So obviously, I know a lot of numbers up here on the screen, but uh, I really hope to, to break this down very, very simply for you all to um, get an insight into what is new money uh, looking like for us as it relates to the funding formula. Uh, you, you, I have the graph there. Uh, you, I have the graph there on the right, very small because I don't want to necessarily try to turn those numbers. You've seen that graph multiple times. But now it's taking that graph and putting some numbers to, to that actual graph there over here on the left. And so state tuition support for fiscal year twenty five. So basically the last school year, right? State fiscal year, uh, this, those funds are coming to us July to June. We received the eighty-three million, one thirty, two sixty. That is based on an October ADM of the ten, three, twelve, uh, and then a February ADM of the ten, two fifty-nine. So the, the first six months of the year are based off of the, the ten, three, twelve, second six months off of the ten, two fifty-nine. Getting, uh, multiplied by the, uh, the basic tuition support per ADM. So Noblesville Schools, it's the, the foundation amount plus our complexity. Our amount then is the six, nine, one nines and sixty-two cents. So last school year, that's how much we received per pupil for a total basic tuition support amount of seventy-one million, one seventy-one, seven fifty-two. So you're thinking, well, what's the difference between that seventy-one million and that eighty-three million dollars on the top? Well, that's the difference. There's going to be those categorical grants. So, uh, sped CTE dollars, NESP, and maybe forgetting one more, uh, uh, honors, academic honors, uh, in there as well. So, so that's the difference. Not much is, is changing, uh, on those category. There is some changes there, but not really enough in my mind to, to truly estimate through for, for next year. So as we move then down into that next section for fiscal year twenty-six, right now my estimate is eighty-five million, two thirty-three, seven seventy-eight. That's based on an October and a February ADM of ten thousand, two hundred students. So, uh, right away you're pricing, well, that is lower. And, and yes, indeed it is. You heard Dan talk about it last Monday. That's something that obviously we're watching very closely. Our, our ADM right now, uh, working with technology, it actually stands in the ten, like one thirty-ish. Uh, but there's still quite a few folks in power school that need to get, you know, cleaned up and, and things need to settle before that October one count date, uh, becomes final. So I'm maybe be a little optimistic at, at ten thousand, two hundred, but, but we'll see. At, at this point in time, it's just an estimate that, that I can update before budget comes around. The ADM or the basic tuition support amount per ADM for this fiscal year is going to be the seven thousand, one eighty-three, eighty-five. So again, it's up a little bit from, from last year. Getting us to a total basic tuition support of seventy-three, two seventy-five, two seventy. Now for this year, when we talk about new money though, right? The story has always been, which is kind of that box member that we always keep talking about with all the, the verbiage in it there and the chart on the right. It's that, oh, that they included curricular materials in the, the funding formula. So this is what this next line is doing there. So you see curricular materials, uh, is taking the ten thousand, two hundred multiplied by what is the curricular materials dollar amount per pupil based on what it was last year at that one fifty-seven, ninety-six. One point six million dollars then is what I need to take out to say, this is what I need to get to a base number amount of new money. I need to take that amount out first because we have to use that to pay for curricular materials. So you see now in bold, the, so I'm going to get to, so what is, what is our new money amount for this fiscal year? FY twenty-six minus FY twenty-five minus that curricular materials amount. Our new money stands at approximately just under half a million dollars for, for next year. So not a lot of new money, uh, coming in, uh, for this, uh, this first fiscal year based on that, that curricular materials, uh, adjustment this, this first year. Looking then into, into next year, uh, next fiscal year, because the, of course, you know, fiscal year twenty-seven is really the second half of my budget year for next year. I, I need to then factor in what is our estimate for next year. So really doing the, the same math there, keeping the same ADM at the ten, two hundred. Uh, I get the, the basic tuition support per ADM at seven thousand, two eighty-eight, uh, multiplying that out then by the ten, two hundred. Total's tuition support is the seventy-four, three thirty-seven, six hundred. Uh, so then next year as it relates for, to, to new money, uh, a little over a million dollars, which is, you know, that, that bar, uh, blue bar to the right on that graph, or actually, excuse me, it's the red line. It's right at about one point five percent increase, just like the, the state budget, uh, totals we could get, uh, of, of new money. So add those two together, right? Uh, about one point, call it one point six million dollars of, of new money that, um, yes, I need to, to split that out. So I get it in our county or budget for next year. But I also want to bring that to your attention as it relates to the, the other big thing kind of on the horizon that led off this meeting.
Yep.
And that was the, you know, bargaining. And historically, what we do for bargaining is, is we take our new money and we multiply that by, uh, sixty-two percent. So about one point six million dollars times sixty-two percent, uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, a little under eight hundred thousand dollars. So to put that in perspective for you, last time we bargained, so two years ago, we took over seven million dollars to bargain new money. So like one-seventh of, of what we brought to the table for, for new money, uh, bargain last time around.
Yeah.
You know, and again, there's seven hundred and fifty two teachers, you know, and paid by through general funds. And so maybe, you know, you can kind of just do some rough math here based on estimates right now, based on where we're at with ADM. Uh, but, but again, just want to give you some pictures, some insight into, uh, what, what you're going to see for, uh, the budget when I, I do the public hearing then in about a month from now, which is, is very high level. I thought we'd kind of go a little bit more in the detail just because there's so much more moving pieces this year. But then also as it relates to bargaining, what you'll hear in terms of what we can maybe squeeze out of that contract for the teachers, uh, in the next month or so as well.
The budget's made by the state for two years, right? And this is for those two years. So this is for sure what's happening because they won't change it.
The only.
Right, 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 right. Right. Okay, okay, right, okay.
All it's due.
And that's done basically for long.
Typically in the budget, once it's done, it's, it's locked for two years. And we, the only factor that we, I would say we control it, but the only factor that changes is student enrollment.
And we bargain every two or every?
We could bargain every one year if we chose to, and that's a system to make through bargaining. If we want to do a two-year or one year. Right now, I'll just say, I think our teachers would still really like us to do a two-year if we possibly can.
Even with this?
Even knowing this.
Okay.
Um, but we'll see. That, that's a discussion we'll have to have collectively and decide that we want to just, so we don't have to bargain again next year and lock it down, but knowing that there's not a lot of money. So it's not like we're going to likely be able to lock in big raises or anything.
Right. So that new money doesn't incl- like, doesn't mean inflation. Is it like point five percent, like fifty, five hundred thousand on an eighty-three million dollar?
Nowhere near inflation.
Isn't it point five percent in like, yeah, three, three percent is inflation.
Actually, my next slide I'll go with.
Let's go to the next slide.
And why did you take it times sixty-two percent?
That's been historically what we've kind of agreed to with the teachers as relates to how much of the new money goes to the teachers.
And so that's just a number that's, that's like the number we've always used kind of.
Every district has a percentage that they determine through their, through their annual process of how many things come out of the education funds that are, that are not going to teacher contracts. So you have to account for that somewhere.
Right, and it's sixty-two, okay.
Who aren't in there that we still have to give places to pay more pay increases or some of the things I think Dave was probably getting ready to tell you on the next slide.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So. I'll just say real quick, ironically, that's actually the same percentage that the state also chose to put in statute to say that out of your ed funds, sixty-two percent.
Yeah.
Uh, must be spent on teacher salaries. So, uh, we, we've always aligned with that here.
Was this included in your initial discussion with the forum that you just had?
What's that?
Didn't you have a?
We haven't talked money yet.
Okay.
We are tomorrow though. So they're going to hear this tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. And, yeah, and they, you know, they could have in essence done, done the math too, uh, based on knowing where we've stood with, uh, enrollment trends and stuff. So it's.
And David's been very thoughtful and intentional that we're not, I mean, even last Monday, I didn't really want to get into specific numbers because a lot of this we're still watching and learning and I don't want to throw numbers out. The minute we say a number, people will remember that number and then, oh, you said, we don't know. Because what if we suddenly see a student enrollment dip before bargaining starts? These numbers will all go out the window and want to rerun all this. It will change or it could go up, you know, you know. So.
Yeah, definitely upsetting the estimate up to this point.
These are estimates.
So just real quick, as I, I mentioned earlier, you know, we had the budget hearing in a month and it's not really a time I, I go into a lot of detail. So I wanted to use this time to talk a little bit more detail behind some of our really large factors. And then of course there's many factors we could talk about related to the budget and happy to answer questions on anything that you want to, but wanted to focus on these because as of now, I can already tell that these are going to put some, some pressure on, on the budget, uh, for next year. So speedy first of health insurance. Right now we're looking at a two and a half percent increase of about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now you may remember last year, uh, we brought to the board a, I think it was a seven or seven and a half percent increase of, of premiums, which that equated to about a million dollars on, on the budget, uh, for last year. As we were looking at our, uh, health data and right, we're self-insured, so we're working with our health insurance advisor and looking at the, the thick claims that come in, we were actually looking really close to another seven percent this year. And I just said, like, we, we just cannot afford for that in the budget this year. We need to, um, look at some things within our plan and, and be more creative. Well, it just so happened that we're also ending, uh, we're, we're, we're approaching the end of a three-year contract with Anthem. So it's been three years now that we switched from Cigna to Anthem. And so our, uh, broker was also doing RFP for our, our health insurance carrier. And we, uh, went through, SAB is, um, um, both myself and benefits team, as well as our, our benefits committee, uh, which is comprised of administrators as well as, uh, form leadership, went through the process of, of listening to the, the respondents to the RFP. Uh, so, uh, primarily our, our, our final two were, were Anthem, our incumbent, and then United Healthcare, UHC. And, um, when it, when it came down to it, uh, we, we ultimately, uh, as a committee, uh, unanimously, unanimously supported the idea of moving to, to United Healthcare, uh, which would be something that, uh, as we, uh, get the documentation all together and contracts together, it'd be something that again, that'll be on, uh, September for, uh, board approval of a, um, of a, of a shift to United Healthcare from, from Anthem after that three-year deal. And it should be again, another, another three-year contract. I, I want to let you know though, as it relates to, to that decision, it's, it's not something that anyone on, on the committee takes slightly a swish because we all know that there is some disruption there as it relates to networks. Uh, but when you compare, which we have done through all, all the data with the help of our advisor, when you compare those two networks, uh, United versus Anthem, uh, we, we, um, broke it down to exactly forty-two cases where the, the, the service was not provided in, um, in United where it was in Anthem. And that, that's about like three tenths of a percentage. In other words, ninety-nine point, uh, five plus percent of all the, the, the networks, you know, providers overlap. And, and that, that could very well just be the margin that, you know, every year, right? Providers come in and out. So we, we felt like as it relates to disruption to our employees, that it was essentially nil, right? And, and, uh, and what that really means, you know, to, not to downplay the change, but you know, at the, at the beginning of the year, folks are going to get a card from United instead of Anthem is, is kind of the, the change there. Um,
The beginning of the calendar year.
The, the calendar year, thank you, yeah.
Unless you're one of those forty-two people.
Unless you're one of the forty-two people, then you would, you need to be aware of, of, of that. And, and we've even talked about even, um, making them aware. And there's even more data within that that we've broken down. I think it's too much in the, in the weeds right now, but to even look at some, some things there to caveat that even further, but the, uh, other aspect of this, uh, because you're still wondering, well, how did we go from seven percent to two and a half percent? Well, we also needed to take a look at, uh, our deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums. So we've actually, um, had to increase those within our plan as well, uh, th- th- this year. So we have also had some plan design changes. In addition to, uh, the move to United allows us to, uh, go on to their, their, their surest option. Uh, so this is a, a, a PPO plan that the folks on the committee were really excited about. This is an opportunity for our employees to be more in the driver's seat as it relates to being consumer driven, consumer minded for their healthcare. And it is a, so it's a PPO option with a zero dollar copay, uh, with, within their, um, within the, um, services that they select. So something that we're excited about because it, it can change up the dynamic and it can also help our, our plan save money overall. And, and, and hopefully we, from what we've heard with other, uh, clients of our advisor that have been on, on the, on the surest option, they, they actually, they really love it. So we're, we're excited about the, the fact that, um, hopefully longer term, what we're also doing is setting up our plan so that, that way year over year, it's not just coming to you with a seven or ten percent increase, but actually hopefully we're seeing our, our costs actually decrease based on how we're trying to set our plan up for more long-term sustainability. Uh, so again, I just want to go into a little bit more of that detail because like I said, for September, you'll probably see the, the action in October for us moving to the, um, uh, an approval for the United Healthcare contract. And then of course, uh, we'll, we'll work on all our communication with, with the district through, through benefits and so forth to notify employees. Uh, but then again, the three hundred fifty thousand dollar increase would still be in, in the budget in about a month from now when you hear that presentation. TERF, so teacher retirement fund, uh, this is something every, every year, uh, you go on the, the INPRO's website to see what's changed. And, and this year, the, uh, the employee portion of TERF increased from six point five percent to seven point one percent. So that six tenths of a percentage point is going to cost us about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This is actually the second increase in a row. Last year it increased, uh, only five tenths of a percent. And, uh, you just really can't do anything about this. This is just part of the, the pension system and pay into part of the, um, the actuarial analysis that the INPRO's board does. They say, hey, this is the only way we fund it is to charge the employers more. Three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, is what that's going to cost us next year.
And they have you over a barrel with that because, I mean, you have to pay it.
You have to.
They can make it whatever they want.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, obviously it's funding a great benefit for, you know, for all of us. It's, 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 uh, it's a defined contribution plan that, uh, everyone appreciates. Another large factor on the expenditure side next year is going to be Duke Electric. So we are looking at, uh, the fully implemented, uh, increase to rates starting three, one, twenty, twenty-six. Uh, so that, that full implementation is actually seventeen percent increase from what it was from when I last budgeted. So when the IURC last met for this, it was actually after I, right around the time I, I didn't have all of it. It wasn't, I think, solidified for this year's budget last October. And they decided it was, it was like, it was a phased in approach. And I think the first phase in was like eight percent maybe, but now it'll be a seventeen percent. So to get the, the budget caught up with that, uh, fully phased in for three, one of next year, it's going to be about two hundred thousand dollar increase. So again, as we talk about, you know, if real inflationary pressures, um, you know, here's, here's three great examples that are no like small dollar amounts that are just, you know, kind of, I don't want to say outside of our control, but you know, we, we do everything that we can on the healthcare side, but TERF and then electric is kind of outside of our control. So again, uh, thinking about perspective, there's, you know, add those up and you're, you're looking close to a million dollars. And you just saw the previous slide related to the, the new money that we receive, uh, all to, all together from the funding formula. And, uh, it, it's going to be a challenging budget year. On the revenue side though, thinking about updates, right? You think about the updates all along, going back from SB one legislation from LSA, they were looking at about two million dollars total that we'd received this year. July gave an update to you all and, and talked about how, well, you know, for twenty twenty-six, it doesn't look all that bad, but wait till we get certified assessed value. We actually have, we now have certified assessed value. So for next year, our AB increased five point nine percent. If you include the tip districts, which is the, uh, assessed value that our referendum fund is gener- or generates its levy from, that's seven point four percent. So that is a very respectable increase. The seven point four percent is going to equate to almost four million dollars more on our reven- on our, on our, uh, re- referendum, uh, operating fund next year. Uh, which again, that's, that's going to help with the deficit that we're coming out of this year, but then also some of these new expenditures that are coming on in the budget. But until I get, uh, I, I thought that I'd maybe have it for today, but I've been working again with Paul's Analytics that they're doing that parcel level analysis. They don't have the, the circuit breaker impact for us next year with these new assessed values plugged in. So I'm still waiting on, on getting that because once I had that, that's really kind of the final piece of, of the, of the budget from the revenue side that to plug in and say, all right, now I know what we need to manage on the expenditure side to, to make sure we stay in balance or, um, in, in, you know, in budget balance territory. So, so that'll be coming soon. And then I'll be able to talk more about, uh, that in a month from now at the budget hearing. The next item here, the second item, this is a kind of a very in, in the weeds detail, but it's, it's a great thing that, that happened this last legislative session that I, I didn't hear about. And I feel like my colleagues didn't really hear about until just the last like month or so. And that is to say that excise taxes were shifted from debt service funds to operations. So you may recall that we, we get state taxes shared locally. These are these three taxes. And talk about them in the Miller Ambassador's, uh, presentation, the financial institution, the commercial vehicle excise, and then the, the vehicle excise tax. Well, the FIT, financial institution and the commercial vehicle excise tax, they were always given to any local taxing district, uh, proportionally, uh, divided up based on your levy funds. So we have debt service, it has a levy, it always receives these dollars. And then it's seen, it's seen as revenue that comes in, and then you add your property tax revenue and that pays your debt service. Well, now the state, uh, legislature in this last session, they said that, no, actually a unit can take their FIT and their commercial vehicle excise and put it in their general fund, which after that happened, I'm like, that makes sense all along. Like why, why wasn't it always like that? But, uh, that is a good thing because then we're in the, we're in a situation then where we, we have the ability to, uh, still in what I'm planning with our rate to then make up that, uh, in, in property tax revenue, make up that, that shift of excise tax from debt service into operations with property tax. So what that nets us is about two hundred thousand dollars into the operations fund. So that overall was, was definitely good news, welcome news to hear. Now I will say that I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that this was just the first bite of the apple, that the legislature will come back and say, oh, we have vehicle excise. We, units can do the same thing because that equates almost two million dollars. That's a substantially more amount, uh, substantially more amount than the FIT and the C-VET. So that would help us then for twenty twenty-seven if that change were to go into effect. Uh, so that way we could again, just make up that difference in our, our property taxes and our debt service fund. And then finally, on the, on the revenue side, we're looking at, um, with our consumables reimbursement, we, we actually, just as recently as this morning, we were talking about in, in cabinet, how, uh, just getting the process all ironed out for, the, uh, the, the raw of charging for consumables, uh, those curricular materials that are consumed, uh, next year. And so we're estimating that, uh, netting the, netting out the free and reduced and, you know, just an overall respectable collection rate that about three hundred thousand dollars would be able to come in and fund, uh, those items in our budget next year. So.
I, I didn't realize. So parents don't have to pay school book fees or whatever, but next year we're going to start charging for consumables. This year they're getting charged. So they're going to get, so last year they didn't get a bill at all for anything. So what's considered a consumable?
You want me to answer that question?
I mean, how much we talking per fam?
I mean, how much we talking per fam? I know it's going to be based on what classes you take, but I mean, in general.
Jen could probably speak to elementary. I can speak to middle, middle and high school. Middle, middle and elementary a little easier because kids, for the most part, take the same classes. But at high school, it's going to vary depending upon what students take. And especially when we have students that take CTE, some of those CTE courses are more expensive. So consumable items are considered to be materials that students actually through the course of taking the class, they, they consume it. That's why it's called a consumable. They're either using it up, um, or taking it with them. So for example, if students are in an art class and they're using clay to make a pot, a piece of pottery, that then they take home with them, that's consumables. So we can charge for that clay, whatever that costs per student. Um, you'll see it a lot also in science class where students are doing a science lab where maybe they're engaging in some sort of activity where the student is using up the materials through the course of the activity. Um, then like if they're building a model, let's say, and they keep that, um, then it's a consumable. So we've actually had our department chairs, um, at the secondary level over the last almost two months now, going course by course and identifying what materials meet the definition of consumables and then identifying what the per student per course cost is. And that, that actually, we just finished that process up. So we just got through that.
So was this a legislative change or was this just something we realized we could charge for?
Yeah, so there was something that happened and shift in the law that now allowed for, um, districts to do this, to recoup some of the costs associated with non, they're, they're really non-core or supplemental curricular materials.
Okay.
So we can't charge for textbooks.
Right.
But we can charge for things that students keep or take with them or use up.
I'm an elementary parent, what I'm going to get charged.
Do you want to speak to the elementary?
You're going to get charged for the construction paper in art class or, you know, you're.
No, it's, it's going to be considerably less.
Oh, good.
So right now we're looking at twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
So you can't charge for a workbook because that's.
Well, well, it depends. So, so if, so the state actually has guidance on this. And so if it's a workbook that is connected to a core adoption,
Uh-huh.
then it's considered a core curricular material and you cannot charge for that workbook.
Okay.
If it's a workbook that is outside of a core curricular material adoption that a student keeps and consumes, you can charge for it. So I'll give you an example of both. If we've adopted CKLA, let's say, in language arts, and there's a, there's a workbook that comes with it that asks, is that cost? We cannot charge parents for that because it's a part of that core adoption. In sixth grade band, we have students that get a band methods book for sixth grade saxophone and they're writing in it, using it, and they keep it. That we can charge for because it's outside of the core adoption. It's not connected to a core adoption.
That, that makes sense. Yeah.
So we've gone through and we've delineated what is, which falls into which category.
And so CTE, that brings up a good point. I don't know if that was on the last slide that, so before we had our expansion, we would send kids to J Everett Light. So we would get money from the state for those CTE students, but then we had to give that money to J Everett Light, right, for them to educate our children. But now since we're doing it in-house, we get that money directly and it doesn't have to leave, correct?
Except for we still also are a member of the Pursuit Institute. So.
Okay.
So the Pursuit Institute is our career technical education center for the area that we are a part of.
Right, right.
Instead of J E L.
Yeah.
But remember, we offer many of these classes internally that are not a part of the Pursuit Institute, but we also do have students that go to, out to classes that are a part of the Pursuit Institute.
And that's a pool of money, like that we, everyone chips in for the Pursuit Institute or what have you for?
Yes, all of the member districts that are members of the Pursuit Institute, which is all.
Do we have a number for the amount that we're getting now for?
Like, I think what you're getting at is like, yeah, are we coming out more ahead? And the answer is, we're really kind of about even because.
Staff.
Well, because we're actually offering more opportunities now through TPI, right? And there's a cost through TPI. So yes, there's more revenue coming in by way of the, the, the thirty-eight report, the CTE reimbursement. But then we're also sending out more by way of expenses, by way of the, some of the TPI opportunities. So it's, it's really kind of a watch in terms of this.
It doesn't sound like. Right, you have that many students.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to some quick project updates. East Middle School Athletic Building, I want to show a picture here because this picture indicates just how, uh, how quick Jaleth is our general contractor can get on it. You know, there's been some concern just with the kind of later start, the delayed start. Are they going to make that twelve-thirty-one estimated time of completion? Well, based on our construction meetings, they say there's still no issue for both the East Middle School Athletic Building and then the High School softball locker room. So, um, we're, we're still being optimistic that yes, everything will be done by twelve-thirty-one. I suppose that if not, uh, all the details were done, it shouldn't be too much of an interference, right? Because we're still kind of in that winter January month for both softball and then, you know, track to start up at, at East Middle School. So, uh, there is definitely some, some, some leeway there, but still, uh, on schedule though for a twelve-thirty-one completion of both of those buildings. Uh, the High School weight room, uh, I want to report to you that, uh, everything has been ordered in terms of the equipment. So the, uh, both of the, uh, the flooring and the equipment, that installation will actually begin right around mid-December. So they, uh, confirmed that it'd be finals week and then through winter break to be ready to go, start second semester, everything will be good to go there. It's already been painted, uh, the wall's been painted in there and then the, the track, I think we talked about how that, uh, the forty-yard dash area there, uh, that's already been replaced. So, uh, s- some progress has been made, but not till second semester. Will it be ready to go with the new, uh, new weights and, and new flooring?
Yep.
Air handlers, the, um, the, the bid packs that were installed this summer, everything has been wrapped up. They, some of it carried into the, the school year just a little bit, but all the, we'll call it the construction has been, uh, completed. So now at this point, there's just some re, they call it rebalancing the controls, right? Getting in there with the, um, the, within the systems and making sure everything is, all the, the, the stats and metrics are correct. Uh, so there's just some, some follow-up there. But of course, we just, uh, had you all approve the, the bid packs for, for next summer. Some may actually be, be in spring break. But then, um, so, so nothing really with bits packs two and three, or excuse me, three and four. Uh, but very soon we'll actually be starting with the design work then, uh, which is great that we already had the money, uh, locked in. So we can start air engineer to begin that design then for that, uh, summer of twenty-twenty-seven, um, phase three. And then lastly, with the High School Performing Arts area, again, everything is, uh, is on schedule there. In fact, I reported just today that they estimate by end of November, we'll actually be working on final punch list items, which is great to be able to start getting some stuff moved in for, for second semester go at, at, uh, all the performing arts areas. So, uh, everything's coming together with, with that project and, um, we're excited to have that behind us.
Do we look to be on budget with all of these projects or?
With all of these, yes. So, yeah, if you was, you know, just going from the, the top, both of those are, have been bids and so far, they usually say that, uh, the, the areas where your contingency can get tapped into the most are usually, uh, like pre-foundation. So the fact that, you know, we're, you know, we see where, where we post past the foundation, right? Because it could be that they struck the utility or found something with the foundation, the dirt work, you know, needed to stabilize. So the fact that we're already into walls with, uh, East Middle School and then even the softball locker room as well, I think they poured the foundation. I, I would say that, yeah, there's very good chance that we shouldn't have any issues with budget past the contingency that's already worked into the budget. Uh, High School Weight Room, yes, that's been a bid project, so we won't have any issues there. Air handlers, uh, we'll wait and see then on, um, our bid packs for next summer. Uh, so those are still TBD. And then of course, for High School Performing Arts Areas, yes, there's still some remaining funds in that contingency for that total project, right? The total forty-two million dollar projects are still very well on track to come in under budget. In fact, I think last I looked, there was close, close to nine hundred and some thousand dollars left in that contingency within that CMC project.
And then how's the, um, the, the, how did we end on the paving projects?
Uh, the paving project, so we had, uh, we had this past, um, I think you recall from my board report, we had the, uh, the Stony, um, Stony Creek and we had Hazel Dell. And then, um, the, you, you all also approved the high school lot number three, I think, one of the lots at the high school. Stony Creek with the weather, uh, with what they uncovered there, uh, that they, they, they went very deep into our contingency for our paving budget because they had to do a lot of stabilization out there. Also the weather then delayed how, uh, when they could get out because it was the same vendor out to Hazel Dell. Well, turns out they found the same thing in Hazel Dell and then also ate into our, our budget just a little bit. And that was also eating into the time. And so again, you probably recall from my board report that, um, I put in there that, uh, we decided to actually, uh, work with Howard and very grateful for, for their, um, their agreeableness to this, to go ahead and just cancel that high school lot for this round. Uh, because again, you may recall that, uh, for next summer, we're also planning the high school lot, like lots four and five. So we also thought, hey, because there's not enough time before school starts, maybe we actually could get economies of scale for next summer and bid three, four and five and get it all done at the same time. So we think it kind of worked out, you know, bearing the circumstances that, uh, uh, we had such wet, terrible conditions for both our elementaries when they, you know, peeled up the, and this is also because, you know, we're doing pole replacements. So we're kind of doing, doing it right. We're doing the right investment level here so we can get, you know, ten plus years out of this. Finally, I'll just say that, uh, because of how wet it is and because we, we probably were, were betting that if we ripped up the, the drive into Hazel Dell, that we would probably maybe have a wet mess and maybe not even be able to get buses in firsthand. So that's actually scheduled for fall break, uh, to place that job.
Yeah.
Um, that's just the last piece that, um, you'll, you'll see as it relates to this past year's paving.
Okay. So are we doing those repairs for the huge pile that you can actually lose your whole car in at the high school?
Yes, yes. Those, uh, I, I know this as well there. And there, there's a work order and there was one, hopefully it's been completed because, yeah, it's right there when you come to high school there and the.
Yeah.
Turn left and turn right there, yeah.
Yeah, it is right in the car rider line.
You just gotta ride it, you just gotta straddle it.
I mean, luckily I don't do that anymore, but.
They should be filled by now.
I noticed when we were there for the open house for the new, uh, for the new edition, I was like, holy cow.
Yeah, that's. Rent vendor for sure.
Um, back, sorry, it's one more thing about the consumables. Have we communicated? I'm a li- I'm a little concerned about parent because they haven't been charged. Has there been communication with parents that this is coming? Because they're going to be like, why do I have a?
But it wasn't the back-to-school guy. That was our initial communication point.
Yeah, we actually just talked this morning about sending a reminder out.
Oh, that's a good idea. Cause I feel like.
It was, it was part of the, what's new this year, back-to-school.
Yeah.
Have they gotten the bills?
Or speaking of October.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, you can like give a heads up and like, I guess explain what was just, I mean, or if anyone would like to watch this video and get the feedback on.
Also said that we anticipate that the bills will be much less than what textbook fees bills have.
Yes.
We don't want people to freak out like.
You said that, okay.
Like, like the old bills.
Right, yeah.
What would be a high CTE cost, like say welding class? Do we have any idea?
As far as the family responsibility?
Consumables, yeah.
One year my kids' fees were eight hundred dollars each.
That out. What, what?
My children's one year was eight hundred dollars each, but they were taking a lot of like CNA classes.
Also, neither kids each.
Oh, wow.
Like Henry's was eight hundred.
The nursing class?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They were high. That was everything, yeah, for the whole year.
That, yeah, that was prior to.
Yeah, right now, the total cost in consumables for a welding student is three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So we've had conversation around, are we going to be able to charge that? And we've talked with districts and other areas and some districts do and some districts don't. It, it varies from district to district. Um, that's by far most expensive. Yeah. Of, of any of the CTE.
But that's only if they're just in that course.
And that's, that's correct, right? And so we have to also consider that it's only one of multiple classes that a student. That they'll be taking, right?
But that's cheaper than doing it out in the real world, probably.
Oh, big time.
Right?
For sure, sure.
That's right. Parents know ahead of time when their child signs up for that, that that's, you're, they're going to get a bill.
No, but you hate to say to your student, oh, you can't take this because it's going to be three hundred dollars.
And remember that there, the, the, the rule for free and reduced lunch will always apply as well.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's qualified for freely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We have.
Right, famous, yeah.
I want to be. Not going to turn anybody white.
Right.
It's really just a communication part, yeah.
Yeah, and that's by far on the extreme end. It is the most extreme example. My spreadsheet. Oh, for, you mean for welding? Um, sheet metal, bar stock, welding rods, gas grinding wheels, pipes.
Yeah.
Um.
Your consumables.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
You're melting, yes.
Yeah. That stuff's expensive, but.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah.
Well, maybe somebody like the, like the welding teacher, for example, could say, you know, I'm here if you, you know, if you need to talk to somebody about the payment of this, I can get you in touch with the right person.
Right.
You know, some of those, some of those teachers that have the higher cost could say to the, you know, high school.
We'll have mechanisms in place for all of that, yeah, before, as the communication.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
I think he does mention that too, that for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I never saw it coming, probably because I didn't read something, but. Right, right, yeah. I know. I know.
Well, and that's when we had the traditional book rentals too.
Well, that's why I've always been. Right, right. Right.
Right.
Right, I understand. Gotcha.
Yeah, well, and, and that's also in addition to like their AP exams or, you know, and all the other opportunities too.
If you do it in the real world.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Public comment? None?
Yeah.
Um, Marty, yeah. Um, our next meeting is, would you say September sixteenth here, six PM? A regular board meeting, um, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Brad, any further discussion?
You got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry adjourned at three, oh wait.
Now, what are you going to do with all these?
I'm taking them off.
What are you doing with them?
I'm going to put in a binder.
Don't you type them up when you get home?
No, I don't type them up.
Do you have a binder, really?